Okay.
Oh, I now see pictures. This is wonderful.
Okay, you can see the video?
Um, yes, I have your page and I have the nice pictures of all the wonderful looking people on the right hand side.
Okay, so, uh, Peter, I'm going to mute you.
And I'll be quiet for a while.
Okay. All right, good. All right. Go ahead, Keith.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 12th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building, and by sending a copy of the newspaper, sorry, by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the township for notices. Electronic notice of this meeting has also been provided by posting a copy of the meeting notice, along with meeting access instructions, to the township website and to the main access door of the municipal building. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi judicial proceeding, meaning that the board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Members of the public are automatically placed on mute until such time that the meeting is open for public questions or comments. At that time, members of the public will be unmuted, and they may provide verbal questions or comments as appropriate. Once unmuted, members of the public using the Cisco Webex platform here will need to use the Connect Audio button to connect their microphones prior to speaking. Members of the public might also direct questions or comments to Ms. Tally, the board secretary, via the chat or via the question and answer function of the meeting platform. And if those don't work, you can email Ms. Tally at JTally, which is J-T-A-L-L-E-Y, at montclairenjusa.org. As to the order of the evenings, when we get to the application that we're hearing tonight, that application will begin with the applicant and their attorney giving the overview of the application and the variances that are required, if any. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are required. Board members may ask questions of the applicant, the attorney, and their expert witnesses. If you are a member of the interested public but not a witness in the case, you'll have two opportunities to speak. At the end of each witness's testimony, you will be given the opportunity to ask the witness questions about his or her testimony. This is not the time to tell the board what you think of the application, that'll come later. To ask questions, once members of the public are unmuted, let us know you would like to ask a question, and when called upon, give us your name, address, and then ask your questions related to the witness's testimony only. After the applicant's witnesses and any objector and objector witnesses have been heard, members of the audience will then have their second opportunity to step forward. And at that time, you may express your opinions, positive or negative, about the application. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per person. An additional time that the public may be heard is when one or more residents present present to the board as an objector to the application. Objectors may be represented by counsel, and they present their cases, including independent evidence and witnesses for the board to consider, after the applicant has finished its case. Different from public comment, objectors and their witnesses are expected to present evidence for the board to consider, as opposed to only their personal opinions, and will be subject to cross-examination by the public and by the applicant. After completion of the applicant's case, the objector's case, and public comment, the public hearing is closed, and board members discuss the case and vote. You will be able to listen to our discussion at that time, but you will not be able to participate. And first up on our agenda is the roll call.
Okay. Vice Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Ms. Lockman. You just muted yourself, Carmel.
I'm still here.
Okay. Counselor Schleger.
Here.
Mayor Spiller. Uh, Ms. Willis, I believe she is excused. Chair Nguyen. He's not here. Mr. Gilmer is excused. And Mr. Jacobson.
I'm here.
Okay.
All right. Next up is approval of the minutes from the meeting of June 21st.
Oh, um, I believe, uh, Keith, you had several changes to the minutes, but that's, those are the only comments that I received.
Yeah, I sent those out just a couple of hours ago, so they were a little late. If you could just expand the red line, Janice, so the board members can take a look if they haven't seen it yet.
That's it, okay. So.
Zoom in just shade.
Okay. There you go. I believe those are the only changes in the discussion of the master plan?
Yes, that was it. Just to clarify that, um, the township-owned properties on all the maps that we discussed should show public plan views.
Okay, are there any other changes to the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions. I believe Mr. Cook was not here.
Right.
So he's abstaining, okay. All right.
Okay, next up is the resolution for Application 2725, St. Teresa of Calcutta Parish at 712 Grove Street.
I don't believe there are any changes to the resolution. So if there's a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right.
All right.
Just note my gratification for the record, please, that there were no changes to the resolution.
Nice work.
You're learning on the job.
Okay, well.
All right.
Go ahead, Keith.
I was gonna say, I haven't heard anything from Chair Nguyen, so, um, I'd say, why don't we move on to Application 2743, Gates Avenue JV LLC at 6 Gates Avenue.
Okay, I'm going to Mr. Murphy. I'm gonna make you a panelist. Tell me who you want me to, who are gonna be presenters for your hearing tonight?
Uh, Janice, before we start, I have a conflict, a relationship with the developer's relative. Should I mute and stop my video? Or what should I do at this point?
I think maybe what I can do is I'll make you attendee and not a panelist.
Okay.
Is that, I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Yep, and then Michael, you'll just essentially be in the, uh, in the audience.
Okay, understood.
Okay. So Mr. Graham is recusing himself. Okay, um, Mr. Murphy. I don't believe you have your, um, microphone turned on, but you are a panelist. You just need to turn your microphone on and your video. Okay.
I see myself.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good.
Great. Uh, Christopher Manos is our architect. If you could, if you could let him in. Also, uh, Peter, Peter Stack, who we had a conversation with earlier. And David Genova.
Okay, I got David Genova. Uh, Peter, somehow it's not allowing me to make you a panelist. I don't know how you connected, but it's not, that option is turned off. But, um, I will unmute him. I, I thought we got around it by, uh, changing the way he connected, but I can't make him a panelist.
Okay. And Lou Luglia, I don't know if you have him.
All right, Mr. Luglia is a attendee. Anybody else I need to bring on?
That is it. Eric Gormley, Eric Gormley is, is one of the other, uh, partners in this application.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
We are, are we ready, Janice?
You are, you are ready. Um, the way, uh, we work this meeting is I have available in digital form all the documents you submitted. You just have to let me know which documents you want me to pull up as you present them.
Sure.
Okay.
That's helpful. All right. Um, well, thank you so much, uh, Janice and members of the board. For the record, my name is Chris Murphy with the Law Firm Murphy, Schiller &amp; Wilks, here on behalf of applicant Gates Avenue JV LLC. Um, we are here tonight seeking site plan approval in order to permit the renovation of an existing structure for retail use on the ground floor and office use on the upper floors. The project includes the construction of a 1,953 square foot addition to the third and fourth floors of the building, um, installation of new windows and doors, and landscaping, um, in the rear yard. The project is located in the C1 zoning district, the central business zoning district, um, and is a permitted use. Um, in connection with this application, um, the applicant is also seeking variance relief, uh, for insufficient side yard setback, which is a pre-existing nonconformity. We'll get into that in our plans. Um, excessive signage height on the building and excessive number of signs. Um, the applicant, uh, presented this project to the Development Review Committee on June 3rd and the Historic Preservation Commission on June 17th, and subsequently submitted updated plans on June 22nd incorporating some of the, the, the changes discussed during those meetings. Um, we are in receipt of the Historic Preservation Commission memorandum dated June 30th, the engineering memorandum dated May 27th, um, and the planning memorandum dated July 1st. Um, to provide some context to the board, uh, the building in question has historically been used for warehousing. Um, it has been on the market since 2010, has been fully vacant since 2013. Um, as I stated earlier, the proposed use is a permitted use in the zoning district and conformed with the intent of the municipality's zoning ordinance. Um, it is important to note that this project qualifies for a one-time parking exemption pursuant to Section 347-101 of the Municipal Code, um, which states that additions of less than 15% of an existing building and conversions to more intensive uses in the C1 zoning district have a one-time exemption from the off-street parking requirement. It is clear, um, that the municipal governing body made this particular decision to, uh, exempt parking for projects of exactly this nature. Um, lastly, the developer of this project has a proven track record in, in Montclair, having been part of multiple development projects, including 18 Label and, uh, the Vestry, uh, building. Um, with that being said, we have multiple professionals here to testify this evening, including, um, the project's licensed architect and professional planner. So, um, if I may, uh, I would like to call our first witness, uh, Mr. Christopher Manos, who is, uh, our professional, um, licensed architect.
Before we do that, Mr. Murphy, Janice, can we have a, uh, the exhibit list?
Sure. All right, um, A1 is the application, A2 is the certification of taxes paid, A3 is the proof of publication, A4 is the affidavit of service, A5 is the site plan by Architectura, the latest revision date of June 22nd, 2021. A6 is the survey by Burton Engineering dated June 21st, 2021. A7 is the disclosure statement that was submitted by the applicant. A8 was the letter from Sam Schwartz regarding the parking assessment dated June 29th, 2021. A9 is the report from SCE on this application. A10 is the report from the Montclair Environmental Commission. A11 is the report from the Historic Preservation Commission dated June 30th, 2021, and A12 is the report from the Planning Department dated July 1st, 2021.
Be, before we go forward, I have one question for Mr. Murphy. If I may?
Sure.
Okay, um, you said that the applicant has a good reputation in town for doing, um, development, but this applicant says Gates Avenue JV LLC, which means, which means nothing to, um...
Sure, so David Genova is, is, uh, the, one of the partners in this development project. Um, he's available tonight to answer any questions. Um, David is the developer I was referring to.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And Janice, actually, on that note, David just texted me. It seems like he wasn't let in as a panelist. I just want to make sure we have that sorted out before we get started.
Okay, I thought I had, but let me. There's a... So David, are you now a panelist?
Hello?
Yes, okay. Okay, good.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, who's your first witness?
Uh, Christopher Mano, Manos, our, our licensed architect.
Mr. Manos, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, where are, there you are. Would you please raise your right hand? You saw almost where the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Christopher M. Manos, I'm with Architectura. I've been with Architectura for 15 years.
And is the address for Architectura, uh, the same as on the plans?
Yes, 1 Executive Drive in Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Good, thank you.
Counselor, can I qualify my witness?
Please.
Um, great. Christopher, can you please, um, provide the board with, um, some information on your, uh, professional educational background in order to qualify you as, um, an expert in?
Sure. I've been trying to say in architecture. I, I went to, uh, Washington University in St. Louis School of Architecture, graduated in 1997, been practicing architecture since then. I've last presented in front of the zoning board for Montclair in 2018 for 441 Bloomfield, which was the old Bank of America building, which is now the Ray O's Office Conversion. Um, I have participated in, in, uh, well over 100 planning boards throughout the tri-state area and even across the country. Um, I'm a main project architect for Architectura and, and I handle the majority of, um, these types of projects.
Wonderful, thank you, Chris. Um, Chair or, uh, Counselor?
Uh, that goes before the chair.
Okay. Ask a very quick question. Is your license current?
No, my license is, is not current, um, in, with, for this set. It's under Conrad Rancotti, who's the owner of Architectura.
How, Mr. Nease, how does that affect the witness's testimony here, not being a licensed architect?
Well, who signed off on the plans? It was Conrad Rancotti, uh, signed off on the plans.
He has a conflict and he cannot testify. Um, I'm the, I created all the plans. Um, it's just not under my signature.
Um, it, it frequently happens that they, uh, that, I shouldn't say that conflicts occur, but it does occur that there are conflicts, and, uh, as long as Mr. Manos practices under Mr. Rancotti's license, uh, there could be no issue with him testifying for and on behalf of the application.
Okay.
Excuse me, should we ask why your license isn't current?
I, um, you, you're more than welcome to. Uh, I've taken my exams. I just had, I just completed them during the pandemic, and I just haven't gotten my final results yet. Um, but, but I have presented, like I mentioned earlier, in Montclair.
Are you licensed in any other state?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay.
I don't understand. You've been an architect for 15 years, not being licensed?
Again, I'm not the owner of the firm, so how we, what we do is the, the, he is licensed architect, the owner, uh, it's under his general liability, his insurance. Therefore, he takes the liability and he signs the drawings with his seal. Yet I, I create, we, you know, we have a staff of 20 architects in the office. Um, not, you know, they're under his, his license.
It's similar to a broker of record in a real estate firm.
Right, this is, this is relatively common, if, if I might say, so.
It's just we haven't seen this here before the board, as far as I know.
Sure, sure, understood.
I mean, usually when we've had this, um, situation, the person testifying is also licensed, but they may not be the person that sealed the plan, so that's I think we're sensing some issues with the board here.
I, I, we just, we didn't have anybody to testify. And then I, I also created the drawings, therefore, it seemed logical for me to testify some, some of the most familiar. I presented in front of your, um, the, the design review committee, as well as the historic preservation committee, the technical review.
Right. I, I think, given that you've testified in front of, uh, the DRC, in front of the Montclair, uh, zoning board of adjustment will accept.
Thank you.
Mr. Manos, are you, are you gonna pass the test?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. If I may, Chris, are you familiar with the plans being submitted to the board this evening?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, for the benefit of the board, can you please provide an overview of, of this intended renovation of the proposed project? We can pull up one of the exhibits if you may. Janice, I think, is gonna handle the, um, moving the sheets around, but you can.
Right, if Mr. Manos, I don't know if you want to present this exhibit or the, I think I was emailed the rendering today.
Uh, no, thi, thi, this is fine for, for currently.
Okay.
Um, just for a brief overview, um, the existing, so a, as was stated eloquently by Mr. Murphy, um, we, we are, you know, 6 Gates Ave, um, we are currently in the C1 zone. The current use is a S1 storage use, um, which we are, are hoping to convert to a B business use. Um, it's currently 16,620 square feet. We're proposing an addition of 19,000, 1,953 square feet for a total square footage of 18,623 square feet. That addition is, is currently only on the, what would be the proposed third and fourth floor. It's on top of an existing first and second floor. Um, so we are not proposing any new, um, additions on the ground floor. We're not proposing to expand the building to the current footprint from what exists today. On two sides, um, we do have very de minimis setbacks. One, the existing setback is at .3 feet. The other setback on the south side is at 2.3 feet. If, if Chairwoman could just point real quick, just to orient ourselves, the, the long elevation with the parking against the Greek taverna, that would be considered our north elevation. That is the .3 feet. On the opposite side, against the parking by the apartment complex, that is 2.3 feet um, on that end of the building. The, the front facade, the rear facade, again, will have no change. Um, and, and the footprint will have no change. Um, I'd like to also point out that the addition, as Mr. Murphy said earlier, is only 11.72% of the total square footage, thus we're under the 15% square foot limit um, for our addition within the zone, uh, to provide us a one-time exemption, um, on the parking. Um, if we could go to page, um, to, the next page is fine. Page, page two, just to give kind of some brief overview, the aerial photographs.
Assistant?
Uh, no, that, um, can you go back? Oh, why do you have?
This is the order that it was that I have it. What?
We received two different PDF packages, uh, which I think was, you know, one of them, there was a set of drawings that was updated more recently, and that was a separate PDF file from the other one, so that didn't necessarily match the hard copy, and I think that's what you're seeing here.
I see. So you, you just have.
You can bring the other PDF.
Only.
Do you want, you want a different one? What do you want?
The original, do you have, do you have the original?
I will pull it up. Just give me a moment.
Yeah, it was a little confusing on our end to have two separate files.
There was, there was one combined PDF. I, I don't, um, okay.
Yeah.
At least the board has it, it's part of us. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Which one would you like me to pull up? This is what I've.
Do you want to just share your screen? You can present.
I can't share.
412 on the bottom, on the very bottom, 41221. Yes, please.
There we go.
This is the, the set that was presented in front of the DRC. The, the mini set that you have are the, are the comments that came from the DRC meeting that are clouded and red.
Okay.
So if we go to page two on here.
Give me a moment to, uh,
You're fine.
Zoom in a little bit so everybody can read it.
It's, it's photographs mostly, just for context.
There we go.
Exactly, perfect. So as you can see on view A, um, there is an existing, uh, sort of fake facade that comes over the, the, it, it's like an overhang of a, to make the building look like it's elongated along the street. In reality, it's just a front facade that behind, there's actually mechanical equipment for the building next door. Um, but as you can see, that our building kind of butts against it. Again, on view B, you can see that we have the existing two-story addition on the left-hand side, and then we have a four-story warehouse building on the right-hand side. The building was built circa 1903. It, it, it does seem like it was always built for a storage-type use. Um, at some point in, probably in the 80s, it looks like they kind of re-skinned the, the left portion of it, adding some glass block, adding some stucco, and a small door that you can't really tell where the entrance is on the bottom. Also, there's a, a metal steel roll-up door that is existing currently today, um, that, that was used for the trucking business that's currently there. Um, you have some aerial views on view F. This is the large parking lot that, that goes with the multifamily project, um, to the right. This facade is, is, that was the, I'll, I'll put up that exhibit shortly here on view, um, C. That is that same view. As you can see, the windows have been boarded up with plywood. It's been like this, uh, you know, I, we saw a photograph from the 70s and it was like this. Um, and, and it's like this today. Our intention is to restore this. On view E, there's an existing, um, fire escape on the rear that we're going to be proposing to remove, which we can get into when we look at the proposed. And then also you can see here where the two-story addition is on the right-hand side on view E. We're gonna be infilling the two stories above it to, to solve our circulation issues that the building was presenting. If, if you could now go to, um, I believe now would be page four. Yep, that's three, that's the existing plans. Ah, that's the existing. Can we go to page, one more, please? Right, there, um, very. Right, very good. So these would be our proposed ground, these are proposed floor plans for the project. As I was stating earlier, one of the issues of this building in trying to convert this building from an old warehouse-type storage use into a more modern office use that could be used for today is how do we circulate through the building when there is no general circulation? There is no two means of egress. We don't have a true passenger elevator. How we deal with bathrooms? And the solution that we came up with was by providing the two-story addition that you see on items three and four, this would be on the left-hand side of the PDF, we have created in this, in that lower addition area, a circulation wing. So I'd just like everybody to note that the addition that we've added here, while we've added 1,953 square feet, it's not actual rentable space. The space is our circulation space. It allows us to reuse the front staircase to go up and down the building. We've now created a modern cinder block enclosed, so it's, you know, a completely safe fire retardant stair at the rear of the building. We have, we relocated the elevator to make it a more passenger elevator, since we no longer need a freight elevator. And what we've done is we've created circulation then in the center for bathrooms, kitchenettes, collaboration, et cetera. On the first floor of the building, currently, we have no tenancy. We are looking for a business use, whether it's retail, whether it's restaurant, we want to keep it somewhat open. And then, but that's the case. So on the lower right corner here, the proposed first floor plan, we have an entrance on the lower side, exactly where the hand is. This is for the office area. It comes into our mechanical sprinkler package rooms. We can walk up the stair or we can go back into the elevator, which would take us then to the second, third and fourth floors. Currently, on the second floor, we're providing some smaller spaces. Again, these are all tendencies that can change depending upon how it gets rented to a business or to a use. But for this third, fourth, the second, third and fourth floor is going to be, you know, an office-type use. We also have proposed a rear courtyard area at the back of the building. This area in the age of COVID, you know, we felt would be nice for offices, because people can get some fresh air. People can come in the backyard. It's a little bit of an oasis. We've, and it also allows us to provide a means out of the building by coming out these staircases and we have an access across and then through that 2.3 feet along the top of the property. If you think, if you can have the hand, just go to upward at the top of the plan here. Correct. And then you just, you'd walk out the back here and then along to the front of the building to provide us kind of like an alleyway of sorts. If I could just go to the 10th page, please?
Mr. Manos, what's being shown are the current plans, the 62221 plans, right? We're not using the old 41221 plans.
Yeah, there's, yes, you want to, you want to use the, this is the old set, let's use the other set. It's the same, it should be the same. For this sheet.
Yeah, I think the last sheet we were looking at was from the old set and not the updated revisions.
There any changes to that particular page?
Yes, can you go to, I guess with the page one? Guessing. Uh, one more. There is a change I'd like to show you. So in the, in the DRC meeting, there was a request for providing the refuse room, which is off of the elevator right above it. It's part of the common area space. So as tenants have trash, trash will be generated, it'll be provided in the refuse room. The trash will then be brought out to the street, much like other buildings that are landlocked and don't have access to the rear yards or to the sods. We also provided an area where mechanical units will go, as this building is a sloped roof project. And we didn't feel that this type of project would warrant having units up on the roof. It would take away from the historic look of the existing warehouse. We provided an area that's enclosed by fencing and also landscaping of condensers on the outside and then on the interior with a fully mechanical building. We also added some notes on boxwoods, on landscaping and also some lighting as well.
I have a question. Tell me about the refuse. If this were a restaurant, where does the restaurant refuse go?
The restaurant refuse would be the same onto the street as well.
Is it a private hauler?
Well, per the, you have per 347-83B of off-street loading. When, you know, there is a provision here that allows for when no loading or unloading can be provided, then you are allowed to provide, you know, refuse out on the street that would then be carted away daily.
But by who? A private hauler or?
I would assume so. I would assume that the building would contract with a private hauler, yes.
How big is that refuse room?
Uh, can you zoom in? Please? Now, again, this refuse room is just for the office use. We don't have a tenancy. We don't know if there's a restaurant. This could be a retail store.
Okay, so if.
This refuse room, it's about seven feet six by about nine feet wide.
And so if it's a restaurant, where is the refuse?
If it's what?
If it's a restaurant use, you're using that same seven by nine foot restaurant?
No, they would have their own, their own space within their tenancy.
Within their tenancy, just to be clear, within their tenancy and their lease, there would be a build-out of some space within their.
Correct.
Within their facilities.
And how is it hauled out?
Through, in the, for the office use?
Oh, for a restaurant. How are you going to get the messy restaurant refuse out to the front? If you have, you know, just give me the path. How does it get out?
They could either use this back ramp system and come around the building or they'd have to bring it through their restaurant out to the street.
Okay.
Do you have permission to use that other, the parking lot property?
It's still our property. This is the side that has 2.3 feet.
2.3 feet, you're going to get a hauler that's, you know, take it out?
They use carts? They'd have to cart it or bring it out?
Two feet? That's really small.
Or they bring it through the front doors, you know, they have a large openings in the front and they have to bring it through the front.
That's right. So, Mr. Manos, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of the evening, if there were to be a restaurant tenant, there'd be a space within their unit for refuse. That trash, that refuse should be hauled out through their restaurant at the end of the night, like many restaurants do, to the street for pickup by private hauler.
But this, this plan seems to show that the lot line is right to the existing corner of the building. Looking at, if you zoom in a little bit more on this, the, we'll call it plan northwest.
Can you go to page one? You see, we can pull up the survey.
Well, I'm looking at this. This is what I was looking at.
Sorry, go ahead.
On that other one, it looked like the lot line was drawn right to the corner of the building, which is where my concern was, especially, you know, I was going to ask a question about having the fence line, what looks like beyond the lot line. So I think that was the, is that the fifth page?
If you can, if you can zoom in on this dash line.
On the cover?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So we, so we have this dash line back in, well, I'm pointing with my pointer. It's, that dash line, correct. That is where that red dot is. That's that property line.
Yeah, it seems different than what was on the other figure.
This is the survey from.
This survey together was a, was a.
Yeah, but I mean, you're going to, if you can put features of the site on, you got to have the site boundary correct.
If this is the survey, it says building 2.3 clear. So it seems okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what that line is in relation on the other plan.
I mean, it says lot line. That's, it's confusing. That's my point, is that from the, from the other drawing, it looks like the fence is outside of the lot line.
Yeah, I think that's incorrect. That lot line is incorrect on that zoomed-in version on the ground floor plan?
Yes.
For the record, for the record, the lot line on the survey is correct.
That is correct.
Fair enough.
Let's see, if I get to the right page.
I think you passed it, Janice. I think it's page two.
It's page two.
Sorry, page two?
Yeah, there we go.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know why it says lot line, see site plan. That lot line is off of that. I think it was just mis-tagged.
I see.
Can we focus in on that just for a moment? I'm not sure I'm seeing what it is that you're talking about.
There's a dash line, there's a note in the middle here where it says new gate, existing fence, lot line, see site plan. It, this lot line is, makes it seem like it's hitting the corner of the building. That lot line is incorrectly noted. That dash line is incorrectly noted. Either something got mis-tagged or something got moved. That lot line per the site plan is actually 2.3 feet off of this building.
Okay, understood. So that clarification's on the record. It's 2.3 feet off the building. This page is incorrect. Mr. Chair, does that clarify? And we apologize for that confusion.
No, I understand it now. Thank you. Can we go to? We, we'll just go page by page here of the new drawings, just a little bit. This is our proposed elevation. Okay. So as you can see, this is on our, these are our proposed elevations of the building. What we've really tried to accentuate here is restoring the front facade by keeping the architecture as is. The building is beautifully designed. We are proposing here to attempt to restore the brick. We are proposing to put in new archtop windows from brick width to brick width and following the archtop that was, the archtop roll lock of the brick that was there. We are not proposing to provide a square-type window with an infill. We like, we prefer the look of a, of the archtop window and infilling the masonry opening. Each window bay is a different window. We are getting custom windows made per bay. The windows on the first floor are taller than the second floor, the second floor is taller than the third, and so on, so forth. So each window, as you go up in the building, actually gets a little shorter in height and we are, we are keeping the existing masonry opening and we are infilling it with new windows. We are also providing a simulated divided light look to the windows to give it that kind of warehouse feel. On the left-hand side, you see our curved addition design. What we've tried to do here is not fight with the architecture of the existing building, but create something with a little bit of interest, create something that's a little bit different, but yet still fits in with the overall project scope. What we feel is that this addition that you see in the curved part here is actually set back 15 feet 6 inches from the existing front facade. So when you're on Gate Street, you're really going to get the sense of the original building back to being restored. It's more when you're on Bloomfield and you're coming along that highway view or that roadway view, that you'll see the curvature of the new addition and provide a more powerful view. If you can go one more page, just so we could talk about that. One more.
There we go.
Yes, here we are. So, I'm trying to move your bar for you.
What's that?
The, 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 the bottom CMU block is the existing CMU block that you see. And then our addition is above it. We do have these accentuated columns on an angle. We have what we, it's a product by ATAS. It has a, it's a diamond-shaped metal, like a zinc metal type, it's aluminum, but it's a colored metal panel that then goes into a standing seam curved metal roof with a curved cow wall light system to allow natural light into the building. Because the building is on, the set, basically on the property line, we cannot provide new windows. So to bring natural light into the, to the circulation part of the building, we've actually created a skylight-type roof system within the curve that allows natural light to come into the building. I don't, do you, can you go one more page, just so we can show what that looks like? I don't, I'm confused just with the set. Can you go one more?
No.
It's just, it's disconnected. I apologize. Just trying to write down what you have on here. That's the landing.
I think it may actually be on the other set.
Yeah.
Your set, so if we can go back.
12, right.
Yep, it's right there. There we go.
Um, so, yeah, that's fine. If you can stay here on view two. So this is, so this is the view from Bloomfield Avenue. This is the multi-colored metal panel system, would have some uplighting. It does show, to give it a little bit of depth, it's set back a little bit. We do have these kind of columns that help create shadows to pick up the curvature of the overhang of the roof. On the front rendering, here you can see the new black windows to give it that warehouse look, the, up the restored brick. And then also the new, if you can roll up a little bit, I'm missing the arch, there we go, perfect. So we have kind of a darker charcoal gray color of the paneling and a cascade down into a lighter color. And then that cascading also occurs down by the front doors of the office area. This was, if you look on the existing front facade, it's currently a nondescript stucco that they just kind of infilled. So we like to bring down the, that zinc, that's that metal material. We want to bring that down to the street view, so it carries that design all the way through. On the front facade also, that you can see in the rendering, where the metal garage door used to be, we now have a nice glass and steel, either a garage door or a glass and steel door system that we can talk about. And then also you see the new windows as well. Do you have the? Can you go back to, one, go back? See, one more, please? Ah, perfect, perfect, that's it. So this is, so on that curved roof where I was talking about the skylight, this is where we have, on the interior, we actually have a double-height space, if you, in the section. If you can scroll down a little bit, yes. So this allows this natural light to filter in at the fourth floor and also filter in down on the third floor to create, you know, a little bit more warmth within the space. That, again, that's our circulation core where we have our office area. We are also requesting to do a metal canopy over the main front door of the retail space and also a smaller version over the front door of the office space to help accentuate where the entrances are.
So I just have a question. The little building. So there's the door with the two, you know, steel kind of harlequin-patterned metal stuff around it. And then there's, to the left of that, there's that other, is that a window? What is that? Does that let in light?
To the left, here?
Yeah, what is that?
No, that is not. It's currently an existing stucco wall and that we've, we're bringing down our metal panels down to the street level to bring that design down to the, to the street level.
So there's no light that will go through that?
No, that's an existing utility room. That's where the sprinkler service is, the water service is.
But the new curved addition thing that you're adding at the top, does, does light go through the metal parts at all? Is it?
No, just where the, just where we have the. No, just where the, just where we have the, if you go one more back to the elevation.
Here?
Uh, no.
Back, okay.
Yes, please. Uh, right there. Where, where you see these, these gray squares?
Oh, okay.
This is where the skylight areas would be.
I mean, did you, and you're saying that you cannot put light instead of the metal squares? You couldn't put something?
Right, because I'm, that's per code. I cannot put any windows on this wall.
Okay. Just, can you go back to the little door on the left-hand building? That seems to me, yeah, I don't know, kind of out of proportion. Did you think at all about just putting a regular door in there like you have in the bigger building?
It's, I'm dealing with existing conditions. I, there's a staircase there that's also in, in, in the way.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Manos, I just want to clarify. What we're looking at is still the old plan.
Can we go back to?
This is, it's, I, I must tell you.
Just one section. I'm sorry, go ahead.
To be clear, Counselor, both have been submitted to the, to the board prior to the application being heard. One is simply certain pages of that original plan that have been marked up and revised based on comments from the Historic Preservation Commission and the Development Review Committee. They were submitted on June 22nd. Everything's in the record, so it's confusing that we're going back and forth, but everything is in the record.
That's fine, but it is confusing going back.
It's confusing to me as well, and I drew it.
Understood.
Can I come back to my questions with the doors?
Anything that has changed has been highlighted in red, so between the two plans.
Right.
So just back to my questions with the doors. So you're saying that in the door on the left, there's going to be a parapet, a steel parapet that will stick out?
A canopy.
A canopy, yeah. Okay. And in the other, the bigger door, there's also a canopy, right?
Correct.
But that looks like it's off-center.
It's centered within the bay of the existing brick columns.
But in this picture, it looks like it's, there's more of it to the left.
Correct, because we're going from brick column to brick column.
So it's not off-center in reality?
The, again, we're, the existing opening is off-centered?
Oh, it is.
With, with where the door is.
Yeah, okay. So then what's that white line?
That's a light.
A light? Okay, all right.
If, if we could go back to the other set, the six dash eight revised sheets?
Just before you go, what were those arrows that were going up on top of the parapet? Yeah, those arrows. What do they mean? It looks like arrows. Well, I don't know. Above the parapet, there's those black lines. Are those lights?
It's a signage.
It's what?
Christopher, can you confirm?
Oh, these are height lines. These are the, this is the, the height.
Do you mean up here on the top of the building, or do you mean the canopy?
Dash lines?
Above the door, above the canopy. There's those four lines. What are they? Those are just holding the canopy up or something?
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Oh, these, one, two.
They kind of look like arrows. I'm sorry.
Can you go back one page, please? Uh, one more.
That's it?
We, we have a picture of the canopy.
What page is that?
My set's different than your set. It, it
This is, this is the original set. You want page seven? All right, here's page seven.
Uh, one more, please.
Here's page eight.
One more. There we go. So there's the, these are the canopies.
Oh, on the lower left-hand side there.
Correct.
Does he mean the extrude deck?
Correct. So those are tied back to support the, the canopy. Those are the lines that you were asking about.
Yep, thank you. Was there any other treatment considered instead of those, the square metal things around the little door?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, they're not doing it here.
Me too.
Can you go back to the rendering? Can you go to the?
The what?
I guess it doesn't have a change. So page 10?
Page 10.
Yes, please.
All right.
Yeah, there. So, so as you can see, we have a multi-colored facade with, with the, with the diamond patterns. It has a, it starts off kind of with the dark green. It kind of cascades down into a lighter color. The, the idea is, is to bring that material down to the street level, so it combines, it connects the addition into the street for the front of the building. It also provide more of a presence than what's currently there, so it has a little bit of interest when you're walking along the street, that this is, what, what is this? This is the front facade. This is my front entrance area of my office building.
Have you used that type of treatment on any other building that you did? I see you have some illustrations of the curviness, the curvy thing that you're putting on the top, but I didn't see any, you know, street level use of that material.
We have. I mean, it's a durable product. It, it doesn't, you know, doesn't really scratch. It doesn't rot. It doesn't, you get any kind of rust. It's, it's, it's a good-looking product, which will stay good-looking for a long time. I mean, we've, we've done it. Right. One of the first times we used it was almost 20 years ago, and it still looks brand new.
Yeah. I, I just, I mean, it's just, I mean, I'm not redesigning your building, but just as a matter of taste, it doesn't feel to me what you're doing there.
Um, can we pull up the exhibit that you were emailed today of the, of the facade on the, on the south side?
Want to bother?
What really matters to a citizen is you're walking by in the space and the street level stuff really matters to me. So when I look at that, it just seems kind of
So that's why I'm asking to bring up this, this perspective. As, as you're walking by, you're, you're now going to see, you know, a really kind of beautiful building sitting there along the lot.
Okay, I'm going to mark this as A13.
Okay.
So I don't understand. Where is the gray structure, right?
So you don't see it in this view because it's behind the building. Again, that gray structure is set back 15 feet from the, from the front facade. So as you walk along the, the street on six, eight gates, you're going to get the sense of an old warehouse that has been restored and brought back to its beauty. You, you're not going to get the sense of like kind of this modern addition. You, you don't, you don't really see that unless you're over on Bloomfield.
Well, most people will see Bloomfield Avenue, very, not as many people travel on Gates as they do Bloomfield Avenue. So
And that's why we, we put a lot of thought into that elevation to create some excitement, to create something that's a little bit unique. Oh, what is that building over there? What, what, what is this place? To draw interest to it.
That, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That makes no sense to me, that somebody would be, draw interest to a, an aluminum, you know, gray aluminum structure. I'm, I'm sorry.
Particularly because you cannot see.
It has columns. Can we go back to the street view, the perspective, the, the rendering from Bloomfield?
Well, that would be on, that was not provided today, right?
That's, that's 412, that I guess.
Okay.
The PDF that you had open.
All right, 412.
You have it open right there. Yep.
That's it, okay.
This is the facade that you would see, the lower right corner. So currently is what you see today on the lower left corner from Bloomfield Ave. And this is what you'll now be seeing on the lower right corner from Bloomfield Avenue. The restored brick building, the removal of the fire escape. You know, the, we do have to provide towers for the, the new stair tower and the elevator, but this is where we would see, if you can zoom in.
I think that there's no question that it's better than what was there when you're looking at Bloomfield Avenue. I think Robin and I are focusing on that little, the little door and the little building and the metal swimmers. To me, you're not going to see the new metal stuff higher up. And what's there covered by a tree is really kind of odd.
Okay.
Agreed.
I think we agreed, Christopher. I think, not necessarily agree, but one of the recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission was that instead of making the panels on the, the area that you're talking about, or Commissioner, instead of making that two colors or two tones, doing that in one tone.
One tone.
I think that's something that we were agreeable to. You know, aesthetically, I don't know if that pleases you, but I, I just wanted to mention that, you know, if we wanted to make that a condition of approval, if you did like that, as opposed to the two-tone color, we'd be willing to do that.
I think we need to see.
So this gray, you're referring to that the gray is one tone? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm referring to simply, you can please go, Chris, if you could please
Review.
Go up to the pictures with the front, where that little door is, right?
Scroll down a little bit.
There you go. So behind this tree, if you look behind this
Can you circle the area?
If you look behind the tree, give me one second here. If you look behind the tree, it's two-toned. I think that's what you're talking about. And I think that we're, we're able to make that, the suggestion from the Historic Preservation Commission is that we make that one color.
And that's the gray painted brick, something like that?
Correct. Or, or the lighter, or a lighter color, so it kind of disappears a little bit.
And so what, so what's, what is that, what is the gray and white checkerboard curved building back there?
That's the addition on the third and fourth floor.
And, and the solid gray piece in front of it, what is that?
That's an existing, that's the existing staircase to the building. It's already there.
And with all due respect, you think this is going to be exciting to look at on Bloomfield Avenue?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Why wouldn't you make all of that brick and make it a nice, you know, all brick building with, instead of having
It's very difficult to, it's very difficult to put a new brick next to an old 100, 120-year-old brick and have it look good. You, you can't match it. Plus, the existing building isn't brick already at this facade. On this facade, this lower level is existing CMU. It's, it's a larger block. If you, as you see over here on the right-hand side.
So gray.
It's just the building is currently painted all, all cream color.
Right. So a red brick next to gray brick looks good? In, in, in an architectural way?
I'm just, in, in this particular case, we're trying to follow what the existing base is giving us, which is this CMU block. Because I can't apply anything new to it as I'm on the property line.
Can you not put any sort of other banding or coloring along that? Kind of give it that base metal top type of look?
We, um, yes, we could.
I mean, I just, I, I don't have an issue with the, I, I'll call it a funky, you know, top. You know, I, I don't know what it's going to look like, but it, it kind of looks a little neat and it draws the eye here. What I'm kind of struck by as I'm, I'm thinking of, as I'm standing on Bloomfield Avenue, looking across this parking lot, and I see a lot of gray brick and a lot of gray CMU, I should say, not even brick. It just seems like there's a lot of mass there that, yeah, it's broken up a little bit at the top with, with the, the new addition, but the rest of it just looks like a blob of gray to me. And I think, you know
I agree.
Having something a little more, you know, robust, um, viewing from Bloomfield Avenue, which is kind of, you know, one of our showcase corridors in town, I think would be great. And, you know, just as you, you put a lot of, you know, thought into kind of that upper unit, kind of doing the same for the rest of it and kind of making it a real nice focal point, I think would be great.
Okay.
I also, I also see the
Mr. Manos, to be clear, is that, is that, that's doable for the record? That is doable?
It is doable for, yes, we, we
What I would suggest is that we'll have our, we'll have our client testify after this, that we can either agree to that or not agree to that. And we can, we can solve for that issue.
That's fine, but we're going to need to see what that looks like.
Right.
Well, we do that as a condition of approval. I mean, are you suggesting that?
I'm, I'm not comfortable with that.
So you're suggesting that we come back before this board with new rendering?
I am.
I would agree.
Okay, well, what?
I've been quiet up until now because, you know, I know my lane on this board and it's not aesthetics, but I, I look at this and I think Essex County Directional Center. It, it, so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with my colleagues on this one, and I, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I, I, I will, I think it's a good idea to have you come back with another, another swing.
I'd also, if you wanted to use some of that metal squares down there a little bit in some, as a feature, that might, I mean, that might work. I don't know. Plus, I also see that wall as being just very tempting for people to just spray paint it. So after a little time, what's it going to look like? I don't know.
I mean, if you look at, if you look at the photo on the, on the lower left corner, the wall's been there for how long? And it doesn't have any graffiti currently.
All right.
Well, I think the wall's been painted over, the graffiti on the wall. It's been cleaned up. Gentlemen, I, I, I agree with what my colleagues have put forth. And I would also suggest that what you've got on the facade on Gates Avenue, I understand what you're trying to do with link those panels that are around the door to what's going on up above, but I think from the streetscape on Gates Avenue, it's a bit far removed so that it's really not going to impact on anybody unless they're looking at it from a distance. And as you're walking along Gates Avenue, though, it's going to look very disjointed along the front of the building. So
As, as we testify, I think if we've used the same material, but it was all similar, same color, it, it wouldn't seem as disjointed.
Well, again, but you, you have to, it has to be someplace where you would be able to observe it together with the upper part of the building, which you're not going to be able to do at street level on Gates Avenue. Gates Avenue is not that wide. You might be able to do it from the corner if you look at it on an angle, you know, but they're going to be very limited views where you're going to be able to see both of them in the same side of, of eye lag in order to draw the connection. So, you know, it's something that you might consider.
And also, is that tree there, or did you just add that for your renderings? Because if you did, I would take that out so we can get a better perspective of the buildings.
And why you think of that, I'll note for the record, Chair, when joining about eight thirty.
That tree is there.
Oh, okay. All right. It's hard to see what the
Bring back on to, uh, you know, to light along Bloomfield Ave.
We cannot add stairs till it's true.
Mr. Gormley, it's awfully difficult to hear you. The sound kind of fades out, and I think we would also need to swear you in if you're going to provide testimony.
Yes. Mr. Mr. Chairman, the, the developer, Eric Gormley, is, is trying to speak. We're going to need to swear him in. Eric, there's also an issue with your microphone, and it appears we can't hear you. Eric, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I'm here. I mean, Dave and I can be sworn in, but
Can you hear me, sir?
I can hear everybody.
Can hardly hear you, unfortunately.
Mr. Genova, are you available?
I am.
Would you like to testify about these issues, or?
Um, can everybody see me? It didn't give me a notification here.
Yes, if you're going to speak, I'd, I'd like to swear you in, if you would. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Sure. David Genova from Greenwood Development. I'm one of the developers on the project.
Okay. Mr. Genova, you've, you've heard the testimony of Mr. Manos. You've also heard the comments of the board. You know, we, we'd love to hear your response to some of these comments as it relates to the color of the, of the expansion and etc.
Um, I'm surprised. I'll start by saying that a little bit. What we were trying to create here was a juxtaposition. What we were trying to create here was a juxtaposition. This process started a few months ago, we thought kind of long and hard about whether or not we wanted to try to mimic what was there, or recreate what was there, or go in a different direction. We chose a different direction, we thought it was more sensitive to the history of the building, and, and we've gone back and forth about what these panels should look like, whether or not they should have this cascading effect, whether or not they should go in front of the building, and candidly, we presented it to the Historic Preservation Commission, and they seemed supportive of the cascading. We were happy about that because we were also supportive of the cascading. There really were no comments made to the, to the block wall, it is mostly an existing block wall and not brick, so it's important to note that in the rendering, it may look as though it is gray brick, it's not, it's much larger block. So I don't think we're really adding to that, I know that the, the rear rendering may look larger in the gray than it does, but the addition starts on top of what is already existing there as, as painted masonry. On the front side with the cascading pattern on the front, we were open, the Historic Preservation Commission's comment was that they thought a standard color but of the same material in the same pattern, one color, if I remember correctly, they had preferred the dark gray was an appropriate solution, so we, we took that and are willing to do that. I'm trying to think in my head as I speak as to what the alternative would be, because we don't really want to shed daylight into this space, it's not, it's not finished space, it's, it's mechanical space on the left. So it's some sort of applied material, I think, or some sort of treatment to the stucco that I can't figure out, but we're open to suggestions. This is not an inexpensive metal panel material in this location, so it's, I think we can solve it if anybody had an idea.
Mr. Genova, I, without trying to speak for my colleagues, let me try to synthesize what I think you're hearing and what I think you're not hearing.
Sure.
I know that we all think that you are leaving this building in this space better than you're finding it, we are, we are all appreciative that you are proposing something that is better than what is there now. I think the issue is that there is a piece of this that is fronting to our premium thoroughfare, and we're looking at what people see on our premium thoroughfare, and we're not happy about it. And I don't know that, I certainly, you know, as I said, I don't, I'm not an aesthetic, I, I don't know how to tell you how to fix it, but I do know that looking at that picture is not something that I think is, something that we want at what is effectively the entrance to Montclair on Bloomfield Avenue, or that's the exit from, if you're heading down the street, you're heading for the exit from Montclair, but I, we're asking you to think about it and come back with another swing, but nobody's saying that we're hostile to this project, or that we don't recognize that you're, you're doing a great job here, but the, the dark gray on Bloomfield Avenue kind of isn't doing it for us. And so I, I recognize that we're frustrating you because we're not telling you exactly what we do like, we're just, you know, saying we don't like this. And so I, I leave it to my colleagues who are better at aesthetics than I am if they have ideas, but I don't want you to get overly frustrated with what you're hearing because, you know, we're not, we're not going to be, you know, Cerberus at the gates here, we're going to let this through if we, if you can come back with something that looks better than this.
I haven't spoken yet. I think it's rather clever, and I think it's, I think it's very well designed. If you look at it from the standpoint of the perspective of looking at the entire, the entirety of the Greek taverna building, we're looking at this in a spotlight, if you drop back away from it, I think it's rather clever, and the juxtaposition between the old warehouse building and Greek taverna, I think works rather well. Maybe it's the color, but I think the architect did, quite frankly, a wonderful job.
I must admit, I like the squares, the metal squares, I just do think, how about if you ran them down the column, added some more of them, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I
Like that, or, and I, but I do not like the front door, that little door, I think that, you know, maybe it would look better if you had all gray, rather than the patterns of, you know, the different grays, but that, that needs a little bit of attention.
I mean, I Just to piggyback on what Carmen's just saying, if you look at the examples that you gave us on slide nine, which is the previous slide to this, yeah, there you go. And if you scroll down a little bit so that you can see the example above that wall, no, I'm sorry, the other way, scroll up a little bit. Yeah, okay, you see on those two buildings, you really have a large area where you're seeing the pattern and you can appreciate the way that the pattern is flaking out. If you go back to, and if you look at the building that you have, the, the rendering of the building that you have next to it, that's now at the bottom of this slide, if you scroll up a little bit, yeah, yeah, if you could see it all like that, if you could really get that view of, of the building where it says proposed elevation, I'm sorry, Janice, I'm, I'm not giving you exactly good, good cues here, but go back, yeah, where it says proposed elevation, right, right there, no, the drawing. I'm sorry, no, yep, on slide nine, the drawing on slide nine, the example that's right next to the, to the building, yeah, right there. If you could look at it from that standpoint and see that all together, you know, that gives you a very interesting view, but my problem is, is that you, you'll never see that view, because you can never get that far away from it because there's another building across the street, okay? Now, when you go to, now, if you go to the next slide, Janice, and continue down to, right, so that we can see the, yeah, stop there. Now, if you look at the difference between the massing of the wall, between how you have the proposal rendering and how the existing facade, you know, you've got a lot more mass there because you've got that large tower that's running up at the corner of the building that isn't present currently now. The bottom of the wall is basically the same, but you've got another blocky mass that's coming up there, and where you have the cascading tiles, it's broken up, you're, because it's got those vertical bars in between, so you're, you're getting some of the effect, but it's not the same effect as you're showing in your examples. So, you know, what Carmen was saying about maybe if those tiles came down one side of the wall, or spilled over, you know, down to the bottom to give it more of the effect that the other, that the examples that you're showing us have, it would make a difference. Also, if it was a lighter color, it's going to make a difference, because with the dark gray, you know, it's making it look like there's a lot there, whereas a lighter color, if you look at the comparison between the existing building and the older building, you know, there's a lot of mass there, but it's a lighter color, so it has a different impact on you. So these are some of the things that you might be able to explore when you design. You know, my impression too is it's not really We're trying to, again, because we have this, this presence, this viewing presence on Bloomfield Avenue, we want to make sure that it's the best design that it could be, and right now, it's because there's so little of the, of the thing that gives it the architectural interest, the different color panels, there's so little of it showing, it really doesn't do enough compared to, you know, all the dark gray masses that it's showing.
If I, if I may, Chair, I, I think that this is some interesting feedback, I think that there are certain things that are going to be, this isn't like this plan was developed last week, we've spent a significant amount of time and money analyzing how this project can actually work. If, if you recall from my opening statement, this building has been on the market since 2010, no one has been able to figure out how to make this work. We believe that we have been able to figure out how to make this work. Switching the color from gray to something else is something that it seems like my client is willing to explore. Completely changing the design, I don't think is, is going to happen. I think that
Also, Chris, too, just to reiterate, we, without, you know, paints really are only option here, because we only point three inches or point three feet away.
Yes, we can't do that as a matter, we cannot do that, or else
On the property line.
We'll explain that as part of our resubmission, I suppose, but the design is going to stay as it is, some colors can change, some other things can change, but this is the project that we believe can work and that we've underwritten for, and that we, you know, this board does not consider whether something is economically viable or not, but the truth of the matter is, is if something doesn't work, it doesn't work, the project doesn't happen, you'll have a vacant building there for another 10 years. But I think the feedback has been good, and I think that we can go back and possibly make some changes, and, and come back before this board and, and hopefully come to a solution. I think that everyone agrees that this is better than what's there currently. I think that we can do something here that works for everybody and makes everyone comfortable.
Mr. Murphy, I appreciate your comments, you've heard what the board has to say, and we look forward to seeing how you can revise this, and we'll consider it once again.
I, I think it would be helpful if the perspective was drawn back a bit, the photo that's on the proposed side rendering, I think if you look at that facade, right now I'm on Google Earth, and I see a much more realistic view of what it would look like from Bloomfield Avenue, and if you look at the expanse of the Greek taverna building, and then look at the relative size of this compared to that, it might be interesting to take a look at, I think it's much less imposing in that view.
I think Tony said that right about that, I think it would be useful to see, to see this when you come back, I think it would be useful to see a broader perspective.
And I think we had asked for that as part of the DRC to get the 360-degree view.
I, she probably said exactly that.
But we did that.
Well, maybe you need to step back a bit, yeah.
We, we provide the, all four renderings.
I think this view is even better.
I just have one more statement about the door, I'll go back to that door, the little door, if you can go to the picture that shows that we were looking at.
The front facade, can we go to the elevation, the front facade?
So right, the upper picture, the picture, oh, go back, that, that picture, so see where you have the, where it meets the taverna?
Can we, can we use the front, oh, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, so see where your little building hits the taverna, that, you have that painted gray, maybe if you put your panels, your little square panels, just down that facade there, that might, you know, tie it a little bit better together. It's just a thought. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So gentlemen, is it our understanding then that you wish to consider some of the comments that the board has made, and consider making some changes to the renderings and the offering that you're putting before us? What do you want to make, or do you want us to make a decision on the plan now?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we want to make a decision, I don't think we'd want to, Mr. Chair, I don't think we'd want to make a decision on the application now, I think there's obviously some outstanding issues that, that I think we can address as part of a, an updated submission, and give the board what, what the board wants in order to move this forward. I think that we'd like to be adjourned to a date certain, and our notice is carried to that meeting if possible, in order to save time and costs.
Sure, sure, that, that would, that would be our, our standard. Janice, what does our schedule look like?
I just have, what, excuse me, if I could just ask one more question, Chair?
Sure.
So we won't be hearing about parking tonight, we will carry that till the next meeting as well? There's a memo in our packet that said that parking consultant will discuss parking tonight.
Is your parking consultant available?
Sam Schwartz, I believe it is, that's the letter.
Mr. Murphy?
It's from Sam, it's from the firm of Sam Schwartz, it's actually, our professional is Lou, we let him in earlier, excuse me, Lou, for not having your last name right in front of me.
Lucio.
Lucio, yeah. I'd like that testimony tonight, if, if you feel like it's, like it's helpful. Again, as I said in my opening statement, this is a, you know, under the ordinance, it's an exemption, so we were simply providing testimony in order to, you know, address the issue, you know, at the board's request, but as a matter of law, it's not something that needs to be provided, but we can, Mr. Chair, I defer to you, if you'd like to hear that testimony tonight, or if you'd like to, to wait until the next meeting, we're happy to, depends on what everyone's schedule looks like tonight, and we're here, so.
We are here also, so, so, so if you would like to put the testimony on this evening, excuse me, certainly, certainly we can, we can get that out of the way.
Sure, that, I think that, I think that might be helpful.
It's Lou here, if it's possible to defer, just because I have a, I have a personal issue going on, it'd be better for me to defer to the next hearing than to go ahead now.
Understood.
And I apologize for that.
And we can do that, that's fine, it's not, it's not a problem.
Okay, then the next meeting that I have would be August 9th.
Okay.
That works for everyone?
Notices would be carried and we'll waive, we'll waive time, counsel?
And does that give you enough time to, you know, consider the comments and produce updated drawings and get them submitted prior to that meeting?
I think it does, we have some thinking to do on some of these issues, I'm trying to think of it in my head, so I think it
Well, I tell you, I would tell you, and let me suggest that, you know, over the next, over the course of the next week, if it seems as if you need more time, let Janice know, and then we can push it to, push it to the following meeting.
We can
I've got August 9th and August 23rd, and I have another application that I'm trying to schedule for the month of August, so let me know for certain which date you want to proceed, so I can have the, the other applicant a date to start their application.
But let's be clear that this, this application will be adjourned to August 9th, and if there is a need for further extension, we will make the announcement at that time, no further notice will be necessary.
Counsel, and Mr. Chair, I just want to, I did want to mention something, and I was actually thinking this while we were having a discussion about that back wall, and my client shot me a little note and just mentioned it, just for our sake, so we can go back and consider it while we're looking at different options, any interest in a mural in the back there? A mural, if you've ever looked at coming into Jersey City, the David Bowie Building, I don't know if you know that building, I'm not saying it has to be David Bowie, but you get my point.
Well, if, if it was David Bowie, I would say yes. I, I know that mural well, I love that mural.
Okay, it's something for us to consider, I mean, it's one of many, maybe a few options.
Right, and, and along that same line, Mr. Murphy, if, if you came up with an interesting painting scheme, that maybe necessarily wasn't a mural, but it was a geometric or a design or something like that, you know, again, it's something to, to give interest to that
Yeah.
To that facade.
Chair, when, like, similar to the Wellmont connection between South Fullerton and, and the new plaza?
Right, and we, we approved a new building, we approved a smaller building in Upper Montclair that had a, you know, multicolored block design to it, you know, something that would, would, you know, blend in with, would make sense in our town, it's not, you know, we don't want it to look clownish, but, but something that would, would blend in, would add to the, the flavor, you know, and just because it's paint, it doesn't mean that it's bad, you know?
I was thinking of not, not paint, but if you had some kind of thin metal sculptor-like thing going down that tower, that might be nice.
There's, yeah, there's a number of ways that you can consider, you know, you know, with changing the color and adding some detail, you know, and just on that, when you look at the other side of the building, you've got that wall, but you have but you have all those windows that break it up and that gives you a completely different view, even though it's basically a very similar mass, but it doesn't look so institutional.
Sure.
And I'd like to say, I think this is a lovely project. I think you're doing a really nice job, but there's just a couple of things that needs improvement and...
Understood.
Needs to be improved, yeah.
We understand that and I think that I...
The door in the front, I really...
The door, we're going to think about, Chair, we're going to think about that door. That door is going to give me nightmares tonight, I assure you, but we will figure something out with all of it.
Yeah. I have a question for Janice, if I could ask Janice Tally a question.
Of course.
Janice, since this building has a one-time exemption for parking, if there wasn't this exemption, what would be the parking requirements for a building of this size?
I believe that I calculated that in my report, which let me pull up.
I think it would be, according to Ms. Tally's report, the proposed use requires at least 80 parking spaces according to the Town Trip's parking requirements, more if the first floor uses a restaurant.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Keith, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Eight zero, eighty?
Eight zero.
Correct.
And I think that at 205 Claremont Avenue, we have sample materials that we can look at if we want to see what the gray squares look like.
That's correct.
The samples were dropped off at the office.
I have them, yep. And our building is open.
So we can just go, Janice, anytime and look at them?
Anytime between 8:30 and 4:30, although I suggest people call me first just to make sure that there's somebody in the office to let you in.
Okay.
Okay, so we are carried, my understanding is we're carried to August 9th as of right now, notices have been carried or, excuse me, adjourned August 9th, notices have been carried to that date. If we need more time, we'll let you know within the next week so that we can schedule accordingly.
That is correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you everyone for their time. I appreciate it and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think at least this with board reports, although I don't have any reports for the board, committee reports and payment of bills.
In that case...
Janice, before we go, are there any other applications coming down the pike that we should start to think about?
Well, as you know, there's an application for 60 Depot Square that I've scheduled for August. It's still pending before the HPC.
Where is that? I don't know, Post Square.
That's Depot Square, that's Trumpet.
Yeah, did you see, I saw you had the pictures. If anybody has driven by, they've taken off the stucco and there is nice brick underneath there.
Yeah, they're still, they're working with the HPC. The HPC has asked for more detail and I think that's probably why they took the facade off. And I do have a new application for 10 Elm Street. That's a pretty large application, a new five-story mixed-use building, but it has to first go through the DRC that will go to the Development Review Committee in August. So we do have a couple of large applications pending.
10 Elm Street, is that Binderian's building?
That's Binderian.
And it's right behind this, that's right behind this building, right?
Yes, it is. Okay.
All right. Can I just make a comment about the process? The developers come in and they meet with various groups that give them cues on design and I think all the comments tonight were valid concerns about the facade of the building. So putting myself in the shoes of a developer, and when you go through historical review and you go through Design Review Committee, it seems a bit off-putting to come at the board and have another round of architectural comments and I'm wondering if there's a way that we can fix that where the time that's spent by applicants, if it's in design, they go through it once?
Well, I think the problem is, we can't, you can't avoid the Historic Preservation Commission and the planning board does not give up all its ability to comment on design just because it also, this application is also subject to review by the Historic Preservation...
But you know what I'm saying, though, right?
Tony, all of these applications don't go to the Design Review Committee. They only do that if the applicant requested, specifically requested in advance. And did this applicant request review in advance?
No, actually, every application goes to the Development Review Committee and that's not just for design review, that's really technical review.
Right.
Learning comments, parking comments and design comments are brought to their attention prior to any kind of publication.
No, I get that, but I guess I'm just...
But a lot of this was new, Tony. We didn't see this at the DRC.
Well, I guess that's my point, maybe there's a way to do some of this review simultaneously to trim the time down because the applicant goes through a process and then, well, whatever, I don't have any further comment, I'm just trying to save some time for everyone.
Only to the extent that the applicant presents the information in advance and if they don't bring it to us in advance, then it's impossible for us to comment on it. And it's also, you have to bear in mind too, that even though a committee may look at it, unless it's a committee that the board has given specific authority to make a decision with respect to a specific issue, then it always has to come before the board and, as you know, Tony, we often have different views and opinions between all of us who sit here. And so even though the committee may look at it and think that it's fine, someone else may look at it who's sitting on the board and has the perfect right to voice their opinion and to have that opinion considered. So there's only but so much that we can do in advance.
And I always like to say, and I asked Janice this question, why the HPC and the Development Review or Design Review Committee can't meet as one body? So that, but that's not allowed, yeah.
It has different purposes. It's really not Design Review Committee, it's Development Review.
Development Review Committee.
And its purpose is more than just design.
I know, it's just, I can see Tony's point and it would save time, but you're saying that that's just not going to be allowed.
Because the HPC is an independent land use board and I don't think we can make them meet at the same time as the regularly scheduled DRC meeting and you can't have the DRC sit through a whole HPC hearing, so unfortunately...
Many times our comments overlap, there is an overlapping of the comments, so.
That's true.
Yeah. I mean, I do think for the developer, it does seem like, but you know...
I mean, say that we limit the Development Review Committee and say, Development Review Committee do not comment on design issues, that's the realm of the HPC. We can always do that.
And also bear in mind, remember that HPC is historic preservation and historic preservation is not necessarily comprehensive design.
Right, right. And also the HPC, I think, has, is it what, three vacancies on their board? So they're not even fully staffed to get the full point of view of a true historic preservation commission.
But they do have enough members for a quorum.
Just about.
And we're not saying that they're not doing a good job.
Nope.
Okay.
All right, well, Keith, what say you about the bills?
I would move to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting if there's no other comments?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Take care.
Have a great evening.